Good evening. I'm Pia Gallegos, Vice Chair of Ward 17A of the Democratic Party of Bernalillo County. Welcome to our candidate forum featuring candidates for the Albuquerque Public Schools Board of Education District 3 position. This is a nonpartisan race. Participants in tonight's programs are candidates Jinx Baskerville and Danielle Gonzalez, both registered Democrats, Ale Eninga, a registered Republican, and Lucas Gauthier, who declined to state a party preference. Our moderator tonight is Katie Stone, Executive Director and host of the Children's Hour, public radio podcast, which she has produced for the last 20 years. She lives in the North Valley of Albuquerque on a solar-powered urban farm with her husband Andrew, with whom she has raised four children. She is a former APS parent, substitute teacher, advocate for New Mexican children with disabilities, and she serves as Vice Chair on the New Mexico Developmental Disabilities Council. We are honored to have her as a moderator for tonight's forum. I will now turn the mic over to Katie, who will introduce the rules for the forum.
I'm sorry that Ms. Eninga, now that I've finally learned how to say her name isn't with us, I wanted to let you know that each candidate will be able to have a one-minute introduction and a one-minute closing remark. Each candidate will be given equal time to answer each question. The amount of time per question does vary based on the question, and I'll state that when I ask the question. And candidates will be muted when their time expires, so please be aware of your time. Pia will be holding up cards when you have 15 seconds left, and then five seconds left, and then stop. Then she will mute your microphone. I reserve the right to grant individual candidates the right of rebuttal when I believe it is necessary. Questions have been prepared in advance of tonight's forum based on input from the organizing committee. One of the candidates, Jinx Baskerville, informed us that she had an urgent family matter to attend to, so this was very last minute. So I was able to meet with her earlier this afternoon on Zoom. I recorded her answers to our questions, which we will fill in throughout the evening. And that will come from my screen. I kept that response here and did not provide that to her campaign. We chose the initial order of candidate presentation by drawing names out of a hat. And after that first person responds, we'll go into order, and then you'll take the position at the end of the line. I'll remind you of that as we move on as well. To give your opening statements, please, if we could please have, and we're going to do the question one in this order as well. Ms. Gonzalez, will you please start with your opening statement? You have one minute.
Great, thank you. And thank you to Ward 17A for hosting. My name is Danielle Gonzalez. I am a Democrat, lifelong Democrat, and volunteer and activist. I was born in New Mexico. I was born in Farmington and raised in Albuquerque's North Valley. I'm a graduate of all Albuquerque Public Schools, having attended Cochitie, Chaparral, John Adams, and graduating from Valley. I have spent my entire career in education as a classroom teacher. I taught fourth grade, as a grant maker at two education philanthropies, and now I actually run a national nonprofit that works with large districts every day to help them improve. So working on large district governance, budget, policy, accountability, communications, and engagement. My life's work is in education and policy, and I really look forward to being able to contribute that expertise to the APS Board because I also have four school-aged children. They are five, eight, 11, and 12. So I think I am unique in this race that I bring both the parent perspective, not both, first the parent perspective, second the expertise, and third, the native roots here in Albuquerque's North Valley.
Thank you. Mr. Gauthier.
Good evening, and I also appreciate Ward 17A having me on. I'm also a father of two. In fact, I'm sitting out here outside of Milne Stadium, waiting to go inside afterwards so I can watch my daughter cheer. I'm running for school board because we need change in our community with the fiscal impacts that have affected APS. In my 14 years of experience in finance and administration with the State of New Mexico and local government, as a CFO for the state, procurement officer for the state, I think I could bring a fiscal perspective into APS and actually get things back on track and make sure that things are being spent appropriately. It's my goal to bring money back into the classrooms and make sure that our students are getting provided for as far as the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I will share Jinx Baskerville's opening remarks.
Yes, I'm Jinx Baskerville, and I'm running for APS Board District 3 seat. I've had over 25 years within APS as a special ed teacher, an assistant principal, and a principal. I have put four children through APS, and I believe in APS. I'm worried that we're starting to sink, like a sinking ship, which has brought me out of retirement to go for the board's seat. And I think it's fundamental stuff. We need to get out of our own spaces and reach out to one another and share ideas and put down barriers for the betterment of the school. If we don't bring in all voices in community in a fundamental way, then we're going to keep sinking that ship. We need to reach out to our resources.
And now on to our first question. The first question, the order will go Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Gauthier, and Ms. Baskerville. Question number one, "Do you support a policy of COVID vaccine and/or masking mandates for APS students and staff? Please answer yes or no and give a brief explanation." You will have 30 seconds.
Yes, I absolutely support a vaccine mandate of both teachers and students. I also support mask mandates because we should be guided by science in everything that we do. And we've been requiring vaccines in our schools since the 1800s. We vaccine for mumps, rubella, all kinds of different diseases, which has actually protected our children and helped them live. If they're going to learn, they need to be alive. So I absolutely support these mandates.
Thank you. And Mr. Gauthier.
Thank you. Under the emergency use that the vaccine is currently under, I do not support a mandate for the vaccine. Once approved and fully vetted in science, then I would support a mandate, but not currently under the emergency use. I think it should remain under the parents' discretion. As far as mask mandates, I support masking in school, but I would request that the teachers make time for frequent breaks for socializing outdoors where kids can take off their mask and actually see each other's facial expressions and show their lies. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to share the answer for question number one of Ms. Baskerville. Oops, I think I'm in the wrong place here on my own screen. Let me just jump ahead here to, sorry, you're going to have to see my little transition thing.
The answer is yes, I support it. I believe in what the CDC says for safety for us and everybody else. And I also would follow what the governor's guidelines are. It's for safety.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question here.
Well, you know,
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm going to have to go back. I'm not very good at this. Let me just tell you that. I have a follow-up question for Mr. Gauthier. Because you said that you don't wish that there was a mandate for the vaccine, there is currently the PED mask mandate in effect, and masks are recommended and not required for being outdoors, but are required for indoors, and you agree with that. However, the CDC reported in September that students that don't have a mask mandate are 3.5 times more likely to contract COVID. And they also recommend that there be vaccination of all eligible students, staff, and faculty, as well as implementing other prevention measures to contain COVID and prevent its spreading in K through 12 settings. In light of these mandates that are in place and the CDC report, what scientific evidence do you have to support the opposition to mandates? And you have 60 seconds to respond.
I said, under the emergency use that the vaccine is currently under, that I wouldn't support it being a mandate, that it should be the parents' choice, whether under the emergency use, whether they would want it or not for their child.
Thank you. Mr. Gauthier, you're going to be first in the next line of questions for question number two, and then it will be Ms. Baskerville and then Ms. Gonzalez. Question number two, "A successful teacher is one of the key indicators of student success. APS has a historic shortage of teachers in all areas and in all grades, including special education teachers, where the vacancy issue predates the pandemic. Given the scope of the board's authority, how do you believe the board could best address the problem of chronic teacher shortages?" You have 90 seconds.
First of all, the board needs to come together as far as policy for recruitment and retention of talent, and it needs to be something that they run with, whether they're getting market analysis from other school districts, making sure that we're paying them appropriately for the school and district size, classroom size, difficulty as far as students, student behavioral issues. There just needs to be a full analysis done first, and then developing a policy and running with it, making sure that the superintendent is actually putting that policy in place.
Ms. Baskerville is next, and I have her response.
Well, you know, we have to look at the root cause of that, why they're leaving, you know. I mean, when I was first a teacher, a special ed teacher at Rio Grande High School, it's totally different than it is now. The evaluation systems that teachers have to go through and filling that out takes days. You know, we're not trusting their abilities in class where they can be creative with their teaching and their pedagogy anymore. So their wings are cut, and so they're not being validated. They were blamed for not wanting to come in during COVID when it was a safety issue. So I think that we need to look at the root cause and make changes and be more respectful to our teachers. It's hard work, what they do, special ed. They should be compensated for, you know, all the IEP and the, oh, sorry, my time's up.
And now Ms. Gonzalez.
Yep. So I think one thing that the board could do would actually be to establish a talent strategy, and with that be really intentional about every step of that talent pipeline. So we're thinking about pre-service preparation for teachers by Grow Your Own programs, partnerships with our local universities, including tribal colleges. We need real intentionality about our in-service supports. So the teachers that are in the classroom right now are actually getting the training and support that they need. We also need to make sure that we're providing incentives, financial incentives, to get the best teachers to stay and to get the best teachers in front of the students who need them most. I think we also need to think about other strategies related to talent, including principal development and teacher leadership programs. We actually know from data that the number one reason teachers leave is because of the principal. It's not a surprise. I think that's why most of us leave our job is because of our boss, but that's what the data bears out. We also know if we have teacher leadership programs, ladders where teachers can progress, they don't have to leave the classroom, but they can actually stay and become instructional coaches, mentors. They can conduct the evaluations, which right now are too much of a load for principals. I also know that there is no research that backs any assertion that teachers having more freedom actually leads to anything good for students. In fact, it's far more likely that teachers who have low expectations for students will give lower grade-level content to those students. So we need to make sure that teachers understand that all students can learn and are prepared to provide that support to all students.
Thank you. The next question, "A major function of the board," and actually, before we proceed any further, I do want to remind everyone attending tonight and our panelists that the job of the school board member is to hire, fire, and oversee the superintendent, approve an annual school budget, and set policy for the district. In light of that, one of the major functions of the board is to evaluate the superintendent's performance annually. How would you measure effective leadership from the superintendent, and what information would you need for meaningful evaluation? And you have 90 seconds. And the order for this will be Ms. Baskerville, Ms. Gonzalez, and Mr. Gauthier. And let me just start up Ms. Baskerville's.
Well, you know, I would evaluate by a lot of formative evaluation, by seeing if he walks or she would walk the talk and follow through with what their goals are for the district. I would be watching and part of looking and seeing how goals that he or she have come up with that they're followed through with. If there's to be community voice, then I want to see the superintendent out in the community, working with the community. That would give him or her a better grade from me. If he wants to change or she wants to change policy, well, okay, let's see what that looks like and what you're doing to make that policy change better. So it's oversight. It's a lot of formative evaluations to me, more so than data. It's watching and seeing if he or she walks the talk.
There is a follow-up to this question, just so you know. Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
I thought she was doing the follow-up, sorry.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
How would I evaluate the superintendent? So one of the things that I mentioned at the start of the call is that I actually work with large districts and superintendents all across the country, so I have some familiarity with how other superintendents are evaluated, and it is through concrete metrics. So I would want to, like most other districts have done, set a strategic plan and align the superintendent's goals to that plan. That's also how lots of high-functioning organizations work. So on academics, I would want academic goals. If we're 20% proficiency in math, how are we going to get to 25%, 30%, 35%, which students, which schools, which supports, process metrics aligned to that as well. We need to rebuild the trust with our community, and we can measure that through community surveys, student surveys. There are validated surveys out there that are culturally responsive. Other districts have metrics, like every student loves their school. We could establish metrics like that and actually measure them. The next is enrollment trends that is very connected to trust, but we are losing students, and we need to make sure that we are gaining those students back. Other districts do have metrics around enrollment and increasing enrollment within each district, so I would want to tie some accountability to that as well. I would look similarly at graduation rates and college readiness rates. When our students graduate from APS, we can know if they need remediation or not upon their entry into higher ed, and I would want to be collecting and analyzing that data, could also track it back to high school, and so we can hold accountable for that. But first and foremost, it has to start with a strategic plan that is grounded in academics, grounded in research, and very much aligned to that.
Mr. Gauthier.
Got to walk the line there with Danielle as well. I mean, it's all about mission, vision that the board has for the superintendent that's coming in, or that's there, or whoever they hire as a board. Making sure that that mission, vision, and strategic plan, their goals, is clear with the superintendent and that he or she has buy-in to those goals. This superintendent is the leader of the district. He is making sure that his administration is fully executing all policies that are in place, that the board, as well as the superintendent, collectively create. So making sure that policy is going to the classrooms, getting communicated home, what the expectations and outcomes that the APS expects from its students, expects from its parents, expects from the community as far as, if there are community involvement, there's all sorts of issues that need to be addressed. And he or she, the superintendent, is that leadership, and it's the board's goal, or the board's mission and duty to drive that superintendent to do those.
Thank you. I have a quick follow-up for this question on supervising the superintendent. APS policy requires that the superintendent's annual evaluation is reviewed and approved by both the board and the superintendent themselves. Do you think the board policy that requires the superintendent to consent to evaluation criteria is appropriate? Yes or no? You have 10 seconds. And Ms. Baskerville was first, because I'm slow. You get more than 10 seconds, so good on that. Okay. This is her follow-up. Sorry.
I don't think he should consent. I think it's what...
And you can see she got cut off there. 10 seconds, yes or no?
Well, right now, my budget priority is to make sure we...
Hang on here. 10 seconds, yes or no? The next person is Ms. Gonzalez.
Well, so I think it's aligned to the strategic plan, which the superintendent has a responsibility for setting, so they have some say there. But in terms of the overall evaluation, no, I don't think that's how it ought to work.
Mr. Gauthier.
Yes, just because there could be an issue there, he could say that that is not his responsibility, or it could be a board responsibility. So getting his buy-in on the evaluation is appropriate.
Thank you. This question, Ms. Gonzalez, you will get the chance to answer it first, then Mr. Gauthier, and then Ms. Baskerville. "The APS budget is around $819 million this year. According to APS policy, the annual budget process provides that the Board of Education identify budget priorities and instruct the superintendent to prepare a balanced budget based on those priorities. What would your budget priorities be?" And you have 60 seconds, Ms. Gonzalez.
Sorry. So I do think academic strategy first and foremost, making sure that we have an academic strategy. We have a clear curriculum that is culturally and linguistically responsive. We have purchased, we would use that to purchase instructional materials. We would use funding to train teachers, provide professional development around that, and to bring in other technical assistance and support to implement against this academic strategy. That is what schools are responsible for. I would want us to make definitely direct funding to academics. We also know that students learn best when they feel safe and supported. So I would like to invest a significant amount of money in ensuring students, I'm sorry, teachers and all school-based personnel understand that research and evidence base, and understand what it looks like to create a safe, supportive, welcoming learning environment. So I would similarly provide professional development for educators and school-based personnel on that. I would bring in training and programs and supports. For example, Turnaround for Children is a program that focuses on trauma that students have experienced and helping to build a learning environment there. So academics and social-emotional supports.[1429.01]
Thank you. Mr. Goethe here.
The budget for APS is actually 1.5 billion, not 819. That's what they're having for operating budget this year, which is just solely teacher. And it's basically, uh, for the 12,600 employees that they have. The total budget, 1.56, 1.56 billion dollars equals about $16,000 per student. When you average it out, um, some of that does do for debt service for bonds as well as only $750,000, which means five hundredths of one percent is going into the classrooms for educational materials, which is a terrible, terrible disservice to our kids. So getting more money into the classrooms, more money into the teachers' pockets as far as retention and recruitment, and making sure that we have happy, satisfied staff, safe, secure campuses, and money in the classrooms for students to learn.
Thank you. Um, this is Ms. Baskerville's response to that question.
Well, right now my budget priority is to make sure we have HVAC systems in every single school and every single classroom. So teachers and students can learn and not be sweating. I mean, that's a basic one for me. Also, I think that we need to have, um, uh, make sure our kids are safe and make sure that we have security systems in place. I remember with my at New Futures, we have babies right in the front in a daycare and, and anybody could have walked in because there was no security system. Now we have one, but, um, it's a safety. So the safety of students to have a nice security system is also important to me. Um, so those are two huge priorities, but also being more transparent to the community of where, what we decide the most demanding areas are in the budget. We need to let the community know and be more, we need to be more transparent with our budget decisions.
And the question, uh, we have a comment in the chat. I'm gonna just peek at our. Okay. Thank you for your comments in the chat. We did pick our questions in advance because of, um, a committee was decided all of these. So it was a kind of a grueling process. APS, question number five, and Mr. Goethe, you get to answer this question first, and then Ms. Baskerville, and then Ms. Gonzalez. APS policy provides that Albuquerque Public Schools shall implement an academic plan aimed at improving achievement for all students with an intense focus on closing the achievement gap. Policy also directs the district to innovate in educational programming to address the diversity of student needs. And the APS superintendent has issued procedural directives entitled Academic Master Plan. How familiar are you with these frameworks and policies? And what would an effective policy and plan look like? You have 90 seconds. And again, Mr. Goethe, you're first.
This is a plan that's already in place in a school system that's 50th in education in the nation. So we have a master plan for achievement where we're not achieving and where we have the, one of the worst dropout rates in the nation. It starts with engaging the kids. Um, this, as far as the superintendent and what they're doing, as far as their master plan and my knowledge of a education plan, uh, I think we're pretty much starting from scratch. There's not, there's, none of this stuff is happening now. And these are, you know, the board is already full of educators and the superintendent is also an educator and, and nothing's happening now and we are a failing system. So I think we need to look outside the box, bringing something that's working from another area, like Massachusetts, maybe what their plan is, and start doing something different.
Ms. Baskerville is next. Thank you, Mr. Goethe, and I'll play her, her question.
Um, you know, I think that, um, uh, I am familiar with the academic plan and I do have my own suggestions on that. Um, you know, especially you're going to continue to have the, an achievement gap. I call them opportunity gaps because the curriculum, um, right now is not reflective to the population of students that we serve. In order to, uh, you know, address academics, you've got to look at what you're teaching. And you've got to look at, um, if the curriculum is reflective to the students in the classroom. And if it isn't, it needs to be changed. And I think that we need to bring in, uh, more ethnic studies, African-American studies, ethnic study, I, ethnic studies, but Asian-American Pacific or Islander studies. I mean, we've got a, we've got to look at our population and the academics has to reflect the, the community that, that is rich with culture and tradition, which makes up, uh, New Mexico. And I don't think that we're doing that. And, and it, we're going to continue to have opportunity gaps. And unless we come together and, and, and work together and it's reflective of the community we live in.
I hope you guys can unpin me here. Uh, now Ms. Mr. Ms. Gonzalez, please. Sorry.
Yeah. So I mentioned at the beginning that I have four students here in school right now. One of them is a sixth grader and last spring she brought, she was bringing home third grade math. And I recognize that because I was a former teacher myself. It perplexed me, frustrated me. I reached out to the school. I got no answer to the teacher. I reached out to the principal. I got no answer. I looked for any information about an instructional lead at the school and I got no answer. So I looked to the APS website and board. So if I say I'm familiar with the academic plan, it's because I've done the research on the website. And frankly, it's too vague and it's not making it into the classrooms. Again, we can borrow lessons, promising practices from other districts. One of the things that we know in other districts is common instructional guidance works. There are multiple examples across the country. DCPS is a perfect example of a place that adopted a curriculum aligned to rigorous standards, but also engaged teachers, the best teachers that they had in the district to co-create a series of lesson plans that every single student in certain grades had to get, uh, receive. And they also created guarantees around it. So for example, if you are a student in that system, a second grader, every second grader in that system will learn to ride a bike. And they worked with the community to provide bikes. They taught mapping, they taught math, they provided supports around that. And there was a guarantee that no matter where you go to school, what neighborhood, you would actually have high quality lessons. I would also want to align that with what we know about school climate and other data, such as opportunity to learn data. That's the inputs. What do we know about access to technology and great teachers? We have that holistic picture.
Thank you. The next question, school discipline disproportionately impacts students who are low income, Hispanic, indigenous, black, and students with disabilities. Deputized school resource officers, the school police, have been placed in about 13% of New Mexican schools. In spite of police presence in some schools, Superintendent Elder was quoted recently saying that bad behavior and violence at school is increasing this year. What ideas do you have for protecting the physical and mental health of students? And how would your ideas influence policies that you would support? And this question has 90 seconds and Ms. Baskerville has the first 90 seconds.
Well, I'd like to know the 13 schools that they, that the police are in. You know, usually it's high minority population and, um, that's a problem. But, um, I think that, um, we definitely need to look at if, if APS police are in the schools, I think that what we need to do is, is make them more, um, human-like in terms of not wearing their uniforms or having them interact in a more, I don't know, organic way with the students. So the students trust them and build relationships with them. Because the way it is now is, um, with the uniform and the way that APS present themselves and it's their job, it's intimidating the students and, and it's triggering to students that have been, um, targeted before. And so we need to make, to me, what I would suggest is we, one, talk to our students and find out what their attitude is, um, and what those triggers are when police are in the schools and make it more, um, make them more human. And, and I don't know if you need to have uniforms on.
And next we have, uh, Ms. Gonzalez.
So as I said before, we know from the science of learning and development that the human brain, the hormones that happen when we're under stress influence how students are acting. So if we are seeing increases in behavioral challenges and discipline issues with children, it's because of the extreme stress and anxiety that they've experienced, the trauma that they've experienced over the past 18 months. So rather than punish the students, we need to support them. We need to wrap them in care. We know from research that when students have at least one trusting relationship with an adult, it changes their lives. And so we need to follow that research. I would make sure that we're training all teachers and school-based personnel in positive behavioral supports. These are strategies like restorative justice and other proven research evidence-based strategies that we know work for, for, um, behavioral supports. The other is that I would actually redirect funding away from cops towards counselors, social workers and behavioral specialists. There's no evidence that shows that police presidents and police presence in our schools makes any positive difference for kids. It doesn't help them behaviorally. It doesn't make them feel safer. And it only contributes to the school to prison pipeline that was described before. The data also bears out that kids of color in particular are tracked directly from those, uh, experiences with school resource officers into the prison, into prisons. I've spoken before, I have personal experience with this. This is exactly what happened with my brother. So it's not just data, it's lived experience, but there are actually strategies that we could adopt that would address this in a much more holistic way.
Thank you. Mr. Goethe here.
I agree kind of with Daniel, what she was saying as far as community. We have community behavioral health, um, nonprofits that we could bring into our schools to aid and assist basically students that are having a hard time. The partnership with CYFD, these are already programs that are already running governmental programs that are already being paid for by taxpayers. Restorative justice models basically that would offer mediation and alternative dispute resolution before it gets to the point of having to have kids in cuffs. But I do believe we need to have secure campuses. So whether they're, because guns are getting into our schools, we do need to make sure that we have secure campuses. So having metal detectors or, and an armed officer on the campus is a good thing.
Thank you. Um, APS policy directs APS to take reasonable steps to safeguard employees and students and the community and provide a healthy work and educational environment. The superintendent has issued a procedural directive requiring that, quote, "actual or suspected disorderly conduct be reported to the APS police," unquote. Are you supportive of this? And do you believe there are more effective policies or procedures to deal with disorderly conduct? And you have 30 seconds. And first we'll have Ms. Gonzalez, then Mr. Goethe, and then Ms. Baskerville.
Are we talking about disorderly conduct amongst adults or amongst students?
The, it, it appears to be students.
Okay, yes, then, then I do, so no, I, I absolutely disagree with that. I think the evidence bears out that there are other solutions that work far better before we bring in police, particularly because evidence also shows that the prime, that most of the referrals are for students of color and boys of color in particular. So I would make sure that we're bringing in social workers, behavioral health specialists, that we're using positive interventions and supports and not automatically referring to the police. Also, again, there's no evidence that hardening our schools works in any way. So we need to follow the evidence and do what we know works.
Ms. Mr. Goethe here.
Again, you know, I, we just kind of said this, uh, doing the restorative justice model with mediation, alternative dispute resolution, having counselors, um, partnerships with CYFD, social workers in the schools, uh, there shouldn't be a need for this, not, not the first step, not an immediate referral to police. It's not good.
Thank you. Ms. Baskerville is next.
Well, yeah, there are different ways to, uh, deal with disorderly conduct. I don't, I don't understand that statement that was made, but, um, you know, we have to, we have to be more humane to our students, you know? I mean, um, there has to be other ways to, um, work with, um, our youth without, uh, stigmatizing them and, and.
And it was only 30 seconds. Uh, the next question, uh, it starts with Mr. You Goethe, Mr. Goethe here. Similarly, the superintendent's procedural directive provides that, quote, "written materials or speeches with racial overtones," unquote, "must be reported to the police." Do you believe this is an appropriate procedural directive for implementation of a policy to protect the health and safety of the APS educational community? And Ms. Gonzalez, um, and Mr. Goethe, you'll go first, and then Ms. Baskerville, and then Ms. Gonzalez.
I guess I really don't understand. So is he saying hate speech?
The quote is actual or suspected, uh, I'm sorry, uh, written materials or speeches with racial overtones. That's a direct quote.
Okay. I, uh, I'm guessing we're just talking hate speech, but I think that would probably go back to the same. It's a behavioral health issue that needs to be, you know, escalated to the fact that, you know, we need to get them in touch with counseling, maybe some mediation, diffuse the situation before it gets further. It's a simple thing, not versus escalating to the, the point of police again.
Ms. Baskerville is next.
Racial, um, no, I mean, it, really? You're going to go to the police for something like that? I mean, that's the problem. This is the problem that we have. That's absurd. I mean, that's all I have to say about that.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clearly established. It's a very poorly written procedural directive. So if it is about hate speech, we need to be clear that we don't have any tolerance for hate speech. And we need to have appropriate referrals, not directly to the criminal justice system. So making sure that those students are pulled out of the classroom. So we're not, um, having any, any rash behaviors, but also making sure that they're being trained, supported, and that we're understanding where they're coming from. I think it's a very slippery slope to say racial overtones and limit speaking around race and racism, the historical and, um, contemporary instances of racism that are showing up. This is systemic and structural racism. We absolutely should not only allow, but enable those types of conversations because they're healthy and productive and they actually do contribute to learning.
Thank you. Um, onto a different topic. She'll be glad. Question 10, New Mexico has a shortage of healthcare providers, including school nurses and school-based health providers. Vacancies particularly impact students with disabilities, low-income students and those who need ongoing support for healthcare needs. What do you think is the role for healthcare provision in schools? You have 60 seconds. Ms. Gonzalez, you'll go first, and Mr. Goethe, you'll go next.
I'll start by saying that I'm a very big proponent of school-based healthcare. I absolutely think we need to make sure that we're providing that in our schools because if kids aren't healthy, they can't learn. So we need funding directed towards that and we need to establish even more school-based health clinics. I also say that we, um, not directly related, but we need actual science-based sex ed. That's often part of health curricula, but making sure that's a significant part of it as well. We need partnerships with our universities to make sure that we are not only helping them develop health professionals, but also that those health professionals understand the unique needs of students. So it's a specialization in child development, child psychology. Um, and I think we could use stimulus funds right now to actually offer incentives to, um, health, health providers, to community partnerships to actually serve students. One of the biggest challenges we have is actually that those, um, health providers who do exist don't take Medicaid. Um, and that's a significant challenge. So we need to make sure that we're working with our, um, uh, health providers so that they're taking Medicaid and able to serve students. But that could actually be a significant funding source through schools.
Mr. Goethe here.
To kind of tiptoe with what, uh, or tie on to what Daniel was saying. Getting with the hospitals when they have retiring, um, medical staff, getting in partnership with them, basically seeing we can entice them to have their retired staff come onboard of APS as school nurses. I think when you're dealing with, you know, young kids and having, you know, like that grandmotherly figure, taking care of you is a pretty unique experience as well as, you know, social bonding as well. Gives them something to do when they're retired. But also with the, engaging with the university, CNM, Pima Medical Institute, UNM, getting them onboard as far as having people geared up and ready to come out of school to go into the schools as nursing.
Thank you. And Ms. Baskerville is here.
I don't think they need to, I, I mean, I don't think they should be capped. I mean, you know what?
I don't know what happened here. I think we went ahead to the wrong. Uh, I'm so sorry, everyone. I have to go back and find where I am. Let me stop sharing, figure out where this is. I apologize. You'll have to forgive me for being imperfect as the world is imperfect. Let me find, um, where we are. Question six. I'm so sorry. We're, we're kind of seven, eight, nine. Were we on nine? We are on question. Oh, I actually went to the wrong question. Oh, that's great. Sorry. I skipped a question, but we'll be back. Okay, that's what happened. Okay, we're actually on this question. Sorry about that. And here you go.
Well, coming from New Futures, yeah, healthcare clinics are very, very important. They're very, very important at every school. The reason why is kids go to them, um, for, you know, services that they're unable to get in their own community or for, um, you know, confidential, uh, confidential conversations with, uh, the clinics about their bodies or, or information that they don't want to talk to their parents, uh, about. So I think that the, I, it's unfortunate, but we're down numbers across the board. But, um, health clinics, health, healthcare within the schools is so important and it should be in every school.
And I want to let you know that I asked Ms., um, everybody's had a chance to respond, I think, here. I asked Ms. Baskerville follow-up question regarding this very topic. I asked her, when you were principal at New Futures School, UNM's school-based health center program provided health services to students at your school during school hours. What led to the closure of that clinic? And were policy changes implemented during your tenure playing a role in that closure? And this was her answer. She had 60.
I'm glad you asked that. Um, no, I don't have, I didn't have control over, um, the clinic. The clinic is run by, it, it's an outside entity, but within the schools. So I don't have hiring and, and firing rights. I don't do the MOUs between UNM and, um, APS. That is not, that is done at above my pay grade. So I have no, I can't even hire or fire within there. So I know that there was a change in insurance policy. I don't know all that that entailed, but that's the reason why the clinics were closed. And, uh, so there's a rumor out there that I closed them, which is ridiculous. So it's, it.
Yeah. And, um, I'm gonna, I kind of missed a question on my list. I'm so sorry, you guys. I'm going to come back to my other question. I'll have to rewind, Ms. Baskerville. We'll give that one to her third. Uh, so we'll go first to Ms. Gonzalez for this next one. New Mexico law allows local school districts, as well as the State Public Education Commission, to approve charter applications. New Mexico law provides that no more than 15 schools may open each year with a five-year cap of 75 schools. Do you think these caps should be expanded? Why or why not? You have 30 seconds. And Ms. Gonzalez, you're first, then Mr. Mr. Goethe, you're next.
Yeah. So I would say we should move the caps entirely. That's actually best practice, what's recommended by the National Association of Public School, uh, public charter school authorizers, uh, because caps are arbitrary. It shouldn't be based on a number of a certain type of schools, but it should actually be based on the quality of schools and demand. So if we had actual accountability for what is in a charter school, then that would influence what's opening and what's not. We also need to have a master strategy for growth and enrollment and tracking what are the needs and what are the community demand. If we have that in our district, we'd have no need for such a cap.
Mr. Goethe here.
I have to give it to Daniel. That's a great answer. I mean, there, there shouldn't be a cap at all. And I, I'm not going to take it, to take away from her at all. We don't, we shouldn't have a cap. I mean, as a policy, I mean, if the school is going to bring something into the APS that's new, going to be, um, fun and exciting for the kids and. going to be fun and exciting for the kids and parents and educators onboard with it, then we should run with it. If that's going to gear success and improve our student outcomes and improve the overall performance of the district. Right now, like I said, we can do better. So thank you.
Thank you. This is Ms. Baskerville's answer.
I don't think they need to, I, I mean, I don't think they should be capped. I mean, you know what? If we have more choice out there, then why not let students choose where they want to go? If they're going, as long as they're in school, I don't think that there should have a cap. You know, everybody, their, schools have different philosophies. And to me, if I'm one, a student that wants to go to a charter, if they have what I need, so be it. So no, I don't think there should be a cap.
I'm going to move on here to question 11. If you're paying attention to my numbers. APS lost an estimated 5,000 students due to declining enrollment. What can you do if you were a school board member to bring those kids back into school in our district? Ms. Baskerville will be first on this one, and then Mr. Guthier, and then Ms. Gonzalez. And I know I'm off a little, but life is like that. There we go.
Well, I think, one, we have to ask the students why they're, why, why they're dropping out, you know? We have to talk to the community and the, who entrusts their kids to us and ask what's going on. I mean, is it because a student needs to work? Because he's help, that student's helping put food on the table? Is it because there's nothing when they go to school, a curriculum that really empowers them and validates them in their culture? Is it because of other choices out there from charters? Those are all, all things that we have to look at. But we have to go to the source. We can't assume. We have to go to the source and find out and ask why, why, why kids are dropping out, you know? And, and I think it's, I think it's a lot of different things. I think it's, it's, it is hunger, you know, and they, and they need to work. I also think it is that the curriculum doesn't look like them. So I think we need to look at all.
Yeah. We, it is 60 seconds, by the way. And I think I said, Mr. Guthier's next. 60 seconds.
Thank you. I was blank on what the question was.
I don't mind repeating it at all. No problem. APS lost an estimated 5,000 students due to declining enrollment. Mr. Guthier, what can you do if you were a school board member to bring those kids back into school in our district?
Fifty, or 5,000 students missing is a pretty big deal. Whether APS has actually contacted CYFD and made contact with the parents and to make sure that the kids are enrolled somewhere else should first and foremost be like, one of our main focuses is make sure the kids are safe. APS needs to establish public trust. We, the schools with the remote learning, a lot of kids felt disenfranchised, and we're not engaged, and we lost a lot of kids like that. We need to engage the kids. We need to engage our community, and we need to promote public trust and gain that trust back. That way, we can gain enrollment. So introducing new charter schools with different programs and everything will probably bring those public people back, the students back.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so I would start off by saying by just the use of the word "lost" in the question is problematic. The kids should not be lost. We should know where they are. And so we should be collecting data, understanding, did they leave completely? Did they move to a private school? Did they move to another district? We need to have that data. Other districts have collected that data. One district in particular that I work with, Cleveland Public Schools, they actually, when the pandemic hit, they redirected every single person in central office to provide supports for students. So it's a massive district, but every single person who works for the district was charged, was given a list of families to call. First off, are you okay? Do you have food? Do you have housing? And by, just by virtue of having reached out to people, they were able to keep their enrollments. That's a huge thing, is just making sure that we're doing that outreach, rebuilding trust, collecting data. The other thing I mentioned was that we need to have a strategic plan, and we need to hold the superintendent accountable against it. One goal that some large districts have in their strategic plan is around re-enrollment. So for example, there's a district I work with, their strategic plan contains a goal, 90% of our students will re-enroll. I think we need something like that as well.
Thank you. You touched on this, all of you, a little bit earlier, but I want to go a little deeper into it. You have 60 seconds for this question. An astonishing 25% of very young children today are suffering from anxiety and depression, with the numbers rising along with the age of the child, so that it's up to 40% of our 18-year-olds. What roles do schools have in addressing this crisis? You have 60 seconds. And we'll start with Mr. Guthier, and we'll go next to you, Ms. Gonzalez.
The whole anxiety thing and depression, it stems from engagement, whether it's lack of engagement at home, lack of engagement in the classroom with the teacher. But there's programs and things we can do to increase that. Seniors also suffer during this whole COVID period with lack of engagement. So getting the community senior centers involved, having that one-on-one mentorship programs, especially with kids that are having behavioral health issues, is having that one person they can trust and have communication and talk to, someone who finds interest in them. Just simple programs and policy like that, that APS could implement, that could have a vast improvement on our children's psyche and their ability to perform in school.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Gonzalez, and then we'll come back to Ms. Baskerville.
Yeah, so I'm surprised the numbers that you cited are so low, because I think they're actually much higher than that. It's actually social determinants that are contributing to this stress, and there are solutions to that. There's a framework around three Rs. For example, routines, resilience, and relationships. And so you could build a strategy around each of those three Rs within schools, and there's technical assistance providers that specialize in that. There's also measurement tools that are culturally based and culturally relevant that we can use as assessment to determine exactly how kids are doing, so we can know where the greatest risk is and where we ought to dedicate our resources. So I would want to be bringing some of that support, some of that training, some of those programs into our schools as well, so that we're responding to students' mental health needs on the early end. We also have tiered systems of support in our schools. The first tier is whole school supports. And I think we actually need to be redirecting tier one towards a whole school support strategy around school climate. Tier two is targeted interventions within that school. We need to make sure that the folks who are doing those targeted interventions are trained. And tier three should be reserved for the students who are most at risk, and we need to be really intentional about how we're evaluating and providing those services.
Thank you. This is Ms. Baskerville's response.
Well, a school has the, you know, they have to, to deal with it because you can't expect a student, if they're feeling that, to be able to sit down in class and take a test and do well. So we need to have, we really need to keep and recruit more counselors and social workers that can work with these kids and recognize, look, this last, these last 18 months, oh my God, with COVID and being locked up and away from their friends, you know, I've got anxiety. So of course, you know, children are, and, and we have to address it. But we also have to address it where social workers and counselors can go after school to the homes of where the students are and talk to them, because they might not want to be pulled out and be, and, and be seen going to a social worker or counselor in school. But yeah, it has to be addressed, and we need to have that just as important as, as teaching them in the classroom.
These next couple questions are very fast. They're 30 seconds. Oh, wait. Mr. Guthier, I'm so sorry. We got everybody, right? You know, we got everybody. No, did we get everybody? Did we get everybody? Yes, we did, right? Yeah, okay, sorry. The next question is very fast. It's 30 seconds. Kids today are going to be enduring the effects of climate change for the rest of their lives. Do you believe APS should be preparing students by incorporating climate science, including human-induced global warming into science curriculum? You have 30 seconds. And the order here will be, Ms. Gonzalez will be first, Ms. Baskerville second, and Mr. Guthier third.
Yes, absolutely. As I said before, we need to use science in all of our decisions. This includes in our science curriculum. So I'd want to make sure that we are adopting, using, and training our educators on that strategy. The organization I work for, the Aspen Institute, actually just put a report out on this a couple of weeks ago, the Aspen K-12 Climate Action Plan, which has specific recommendations for school districts for how they could do this. So I absolutely support that, and I think we can do much more to make sure that we're training our educators to implement against it.
Thank you. Ms. Baskerville is second, and this is her response.
Well, yeah, I don't know why they wouldn't. I mean, it is something that's important and is a factor in our, in our world right now. And incorporating that in, you know, our, our curriculum, so students are empowered and aware of what's going on is, is a smart thing.
Mr. Guthier?
They've been teaching climate change in schools since the 80s. Chlorofluorocarbons, I mean, that's why I stopped using hairspray. This stuff is, it's Earth Day, it's all been, you know, implemented in curriculum in the schools, and I think it needs to continue.
Thank you. The next question also is quick. It's only 30 seconds. New Mexico has an unfortunate legacy of minimizing and erasing our state's history of being twice colonized and our national history about the treatment of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, even though we are one of six states with a majority, minority population. Do you see this as a problem? And if you do, what will you do as a policymaker to remedy the situation? There's 30 seconds for this. It goes first to Ms. Baskerville, then to Mr. Guthier, then to Ms. Gonzalez. And this is Ms. Baskerville's.
This is my life. This is my life. I'm telling you, yeah. We need to, we need to counteract that. We need, I swear to God, I think everybody, every teacher needs to go through an anti-racism training to get in touch with their own biases, to know what our audi, their audience is that of the students that make up APS. And so that, we, we need to, we need to make some serious changes.
And then next will be Mr. Guthier.
I am all for training the educators on recognizing biases, racial biases. As far as teaching the kids, I think we need to stick to the basic. Do unto others as you had done unto you, or, you know, love thy neighbor as thyself. Keep it simple. Let's focus on respect, kindness, character counts, and keeping our focus on educating the kids the core curriculum that they need to learn. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, so I actually published an opinion piece in the Santa Fe New Mexican last year called, Decolonize, We Need to Decolonize Our Education System. So I strongly believe that we need to decolonize not just our education system, but our society. And that starts with the culturally and linguistically responsive approach to education, which I define in the blog, but is largely recognizing the assets that all students, but particularly students of colors, of color, bring to the classroom. So make sure that we have culture and linguistically responsive approaches. Make sure that we have training on cultural awareness for teachers. I actually disagree with Jinx. There's no evidence base that shows that anti-bias trainings work in any way to improve outcomes for students, but there are other professional development strategies that do work.
Thank you. This next question has the 60 seconds, and you're almost done. There's only two more questions. One in five children at APS lives in poverty, and there are an estimated 5,000 unhoused or homeless students at APS. As a potential policymaker, what ideas do you have to improve outcomes for these most vulnerable students? You have 60 seconds. And Mr. Guthier, will you go first? Ms. Gonzalez, will you go second?
I actually went to a middle school in Florida, an alternative middle school, which was two blocks away from the homeless shelter my mother worked at. So everybody at school thought I was homeless, which was not cool. But, you know, it builds character. But I can definitely empathize with the students who do not get the meals, the clothing, just the basic essentials they need for school. We do have a lot of community organizations, and we need to partner with them as policymakers at APS, and making sure that we're utilizing them, that kids are getting the essentials that they need. There's a whole lot of community programs as well to make sure that they're getting food and stuff, the necessities at home. So if there's that need, we should be employing those methods as well, making sure that the kids are well-supported.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so there are specific federal programs and streams of federal funding that are dedicated directly towards these title ones, or students living at the poverty, below the poverty line. The McKinney-Vento Program provides funding specifically for students living in homelessness. So we need to leverage those resources, not just funding, but technical assistance and programs to provide supports for kids. We also need to have a whole child approach to recognize that kids are whole people, and we need to be attentive to their nutritional needs, healthcare needs, making sure that they have access to not just affordable housing, but sustainably affordable housing. And so that's partnerships, not just with community-based providers, although I think that has to be the number one strategy, but partnerships with other lines of government, with the city of Albuquerque, with the Burnley County, to make sure that we're coordinating services there to provide those community supports. The last thing I would say is that I just ascribe to the notion of the curb cut effect, which is if we are designing solutions for those furthest at the margins, then those are going to support all kids. The curb cut was basically that when we cut curves for people in wheelchairs, it helped everybody. And if we take that same approach to education, these same solutions for kids at the margin will help all kids.
Sometimes they call that universal design. This is Jinx's answer to that question.
Well, there's a lot of nonprofits out there that will help our homeless youth, but we don't tap into them. We have a block between APS, sometimes in, in great nonprofits out there that would help, that gives, hands out food, that, that, that gives shelter for our students. It is a huge problem. I would want to reach out to the nonprofits more to help bridge and get kids the safety and the, the, the safe environment that, that they, that they need. And, and I, when I was at New Futures, I had children, I had students and their children living in a car because they had no place to go. This is, this is terrible. So we need to reach out to our community and the resources in our community to help bridge and find out who those kids are and what services some of these nonprofits can provide for them.
And next. Oh, that was it? Okay. This is the last question, and it's a gimme, and it's a really easy one. I hope you like it. It's only 30 seconds long. Never before in human history have children spent less time outside. Schools can help get kids outside and learning. Do you support policies to create more outdoor learning opportunities so that they're offered at every grade? You have 30 seconds. And first, we'll hear from Ms. Gonzalez, then Ms. Baskerville, and then Mr. Guthier.
Yes, absolutely, across the board. And I think they also need to be aligned to developmental stages. So we know that the way that young children in early childhood would engage outside is different from what we know about adolescents and students older. So I think we need to, across the board, make sure that our curriculum is not just play-based, but land-based and project-based. And outdoor engagement is one way to do that. I absolutely support more outdoors.
Thank you. And then this is the answer that was given by Ms. Baskerville.
I'm all for outdoor opportunities. I created at New Futures a community garden, or a school garden. And, and I'm telling you, it, it, kids, that would get kids to stay in school more, if we think out of the box. And yes, outdoor learning, I'm all for community gardens, because you can build all kinds of curriculum through a garden and through things outside. All curriculum, all subjects can be integrated with things outside.
Mr. Guthier?
It may not look like it, but I'm a big gardener. Everything outdoors, I'm, I mean, anything and everything. I mean, there's so many opportunities for sports, volleyball. Everything outdoors, I'm, I mean, anything and everything. I mean, there's so many opportunities for sports, volleyball, golf, kickball. I mean, there's so many outdoor activities we can be getting the kids involved in. It gets them out of the classrooms. They can do math. I mean, there's all sorts of science learning projects, sun prisms, rainbows. I mean, there's so many things they could do outdoors that would increase and enhance their learning skills and abilities and just plain old fun.
Well, I agree. I couldn't agree more, and I hope everybody remembers that and, and, and volunteers to be a chaperone. Because I've been in schools where there's not enough chaperones for doing outdoor learning, and that is certainly part of the equation too. Thank you all so much for participating in tonight's forum. You've done a wonderful job. We're gonna have closing statements now, and they can be one minute long. And we're going to go ahead in the same order as our last question. So first, Ms. Gonzalez, then Ms. Baskerville, and then you, Mr. Gauthier, you get the last word. So Ms. Gonzalez, you first.
Yeah, so I appreciate you hosting this forum, and thank you to all of the folks who participated as well. I appreciate the opportunity. As I said in the beginning, I was raised here in the North Valley and feel deeply connected to my community. And it's that connection to my community and the commitment to service that I learned from my grandfather, who was a POW, that is driving me to serve. I don't feel I can sit by on the sidelines during this historic moment, particularly what I've seen my students, my own children, experience. So I'm running to combine my professional expertise in education policy, governance, accountability, budgets, and strategy with my personal experience as a parent, and my personal experience as an Albuquerquean, Burkeña. My name is Danielle Gonzalez. I'm running for District Three. I would appreciate your support. My website is gonzalesforaps.com. Thank you.
This is Ms. Jinx's closing statement.
Yes, my name, as you know, is Jinx Baskerville, and I want to be the next board member for District Three and represent you. What you see is what you get with me. I have a lot of history within APS. I believe in APS. I believe in our teachers. But we just need to come together more, and I am the voice, and I have the tools to bring people together, to start conversations. I'm a collaborator, I collaborate with people. And my expertise in years of experience within APS gives me a different lens and a good lens into decision-making for APS. So I hope to get your vote.
And Mr. Gauthier?
I appreciate the opportunity to be with you guys this evening. I do have a no-nonsense appearance, but that's strictly for my fiscal responsibilities with APS. Other than that, as a father of two school-aged kids, the youngest sits in fourth grade, and my other one's a freshman in high school, I'm very concerned with our kids and what's happening in our future in our community. That's why I'm called to serve and using my fiscal, fiscal experience and my administrative policy, my work with the legislature, my work with the city of Espanola, doing redistricting plans and just Robert's Rule of Order and the whole administrative policies, bringing that sense of experience to the board and getting the superintendent to do what he's gotta do. I'm Lucas Gauthier, and I hope you vote for me.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody taking the time to be with us tonight, and you've all done a wonderful job. I know all of us who are here on this call admire you all for putting your names in the hat and taking the risk and being brave and courageous to run for office. It's a beautiful thing to do, and it's quite a service to all of us who are out here on the sidelines with the opportunity to vote for one of you. Given the contention that we're seeing at school board meetings around the country, you know, we really, I, I would like to urge the people on this call to participate in school board meetings and help bring back the civility by being the people in the room that bring that civility to our school board meetings. And good luck, everyone. Voting is open right now. You can early vote all the way through to right before the election day. And then, of course, the big election day is November 2nd, I think. Anyway, I am so grateful that you all took the time to be with us today, and have a beautiful evening. Thank you all so much. You did a wonderful job tonight, candidates. Thank you.